Good evening, everyone. Tonight is March 27, 2024. It's about 6:00 PM. And I would like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting for tonight. Our first order of business is a pledge of allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is the adoption of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Would someone like to make a motion, please?
So this is Janet. I move to approve the adoption of agenda for the March 27, 2024 city council meeting.
This is Sue, I'll second.
It's moved in second. Are there any questions or discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Our next item of business is approval of the consent agenda, the approval of the March 13, 2024 city council meeting minutes, the approval of the bill payments as posted. Is there a motion to approve?
So this is Janet. I move to approve the consent agenda. Item number two, I have submitted edits to the minutes that our administrator hasn't had a chance to look at yet, so we're proposing we pull those.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to approve the approval of the bill payments as posted?
So Rob, I'll second.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. We're moving quickly onto letter number C, public open forum. And we do have someone here to speak at the public open forum. This is Matthew Magistad. Come up to the table, please. Pull that microphone right up so we can hear you echo. And tell us what you would like us to hear.
Hi, can you hear me? Oh, it's a little loud.
No, it's all good.
There you go. All right. Well, I'm Matthew Magistad. I'm a citizen of Columbus here, and I'm working on my Eagle Scout project. It's about oak wilt and the effects of it, overall education. And the plan is to be planting some trees and overall giving out posters and flyers to educate people because I've seen that in like my own neighbors, they might cut down trees or trim trees when it's not quite the appropriate time and oak wilt spreads. And I've seen, you know, oaks dying. So at some point, we won't have any oak wilt trees or any oak trees, excuse me. So that is my plan. As far as fundraising for it, I have options here, like the Stacy Lions and others. But if the city were to have any funds it could allocate would be, would be great. That's, that's pretty much the plan that I have here.
So I'm looking at page D, proposed page D. It says, reach out to the DNR for oak tree saplings. Is that something they always do? Or are they available or?
I was, I was planning on reaching out to the DNR soon and see if they would. Otherwise, I do have other access, possibly the Forest Lake FFA is a possible place to get oak tree saplings, but I am currently working on that right now.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have that.
I just had one.
I'm curious how much you are trying to raise.
Well, about an estimate that I'm hoping to get overall is approximately $560 or so. That's just an estimate right now, but yeah.
And you mentioned that you approached the Stacy Lions?
I will be approaching them in the coming days here.
Okay, because we have a Columbus Lions, too, and they may be able to donate.
And I will, I'll reach out to them as well. That'll be good.
When are you proposing to do this?
I am proposing here.
Just spring? Just spring?
Yes, it'll be probably, probably May is when I would for sure have, have it started. And then I know it says in here to have it done by the end of August. And that's also including watering these trees as they'll, they'll need water throughout the summer. And that'll be part of my plan as well to make sure that they live.
Good plan, good idea.
How many trees are you going to plant?
Six to 12 depends on how much I'm able to get.
And do you have a certain type of oak that you're looking for?
I'm just looking for oak trees. I'm not quite specific yet.
Where, where do you plan to plant them?
I was hoping that I could plant them in the city park across the street there. But if there's a better place that, that you guys need trees, I would be willing to go wherever in city.
Well, we could talk to the park board about that.
Well, didn't they just cut down some?
Yeah.
I thought they just cut down some oak that were infected with oak wilt. So maybe they'd want to replace them.
I think oak, and what else did they, JW? They cut down a few other different.
Ash trees.
Ash trees.
Well, it sounds like a really good project. I, I just know that when we were going to cut down trees at our house, and we had never cut them down, I had no idea there was a time of the year that you are not supposed to. But luckily, we had hired somebody who knew. And he's like, well, you can't cut them down now to come back. And he explained the whole timeframe of when you can cut and when you can't. And it's important information. And I don't know how anybody would know unless, you know, you were educated.
Yeah.
So it sounds like a good project.
No, maybe that would be a good idea if you, if you showed up at the park board. It's on April 30, right? April 16, I believe, Ron. Oh, I had April 30.
And also, we have a fall fest in the fall and.
September 20 through the 21st.
16th, Matt. I was wrong. It's the 16th.
16th.
It'll be right here at 5:00.
Ron, do you think that's something the park board would be interested in, right? I mean.
Well, they can give their opinion.
Yeah.
They love their trees. They have lots of opinions about trees.
No, and I, this, I appreciate you digging into this because it's been an issue that I've had brought forward to me. And many of my neighbors, I don't know what it was from, all of a sudden, nobody had been trimming trees, but we have 50-year-old oaks that are two foot, three foot across. And it just came through our neighborhood and completely wiped everybody's oak groves out. And I can't even keep up with cutting the wood as it falls down. So I do appreciate you looking into it and educating the people on it, so.
And also, we have the fall fest in the fall. Maybe you could consider putting up a table and having your leaflets and pamphlets and whatever, educating anybody who will listen.
And when is that again?
September 20. Actually, the one that you, the day you care about would be the 21st.
It's Saturday, 21st.
Well, I'm approaching my 18th birthday, so I have to get this done by my 18th birthday. I do have a deadline. October 3, so I still got time, but cut a little close there.
Yeah. Then we'll have a Bloody Mary when you're done.
Oh, no, no, no. You have to be 21. You're thinking about back, back in your day.
Just to be 18. But anyway, that might be a good educational opportunity because the elms have gone, the oaks have gone, the ashes have gone, the blue spruce are all infected, and they're all going to die. But if we can stretch it out and slow it down, I think that'd be a benefit to our whole city.
Well, and there's, in terms of your education, too, I mean, Jack, you could connect him with Connor, and maybe we could put something on the website. So if you have information that, you know, you'd like to share, that would be of interest to property owners about oak wilt and stuff, we could probably put that on our website.
If you're going to, if you're going to do a report, and a lot of people don't know the timing of cutting oaks, which is generally April through about the 1st of September, any information like that would be great to share with the residents.
So how does he get in contact with whom to make this happen?
Well, I was thinking that Jack could sort of make the connection with Connor, who's our public information coordinator and is the webmaster for the city.
Jesse has your information on that application, so we could reach out and pass that along to Connor, and we'll make that contact.
Perfect.
Do you have a phone number on here where somebody can get ahold of you?
Yes, I do.
What page?
One second.
Just so that it doesn't get left in the dust.
On proposal page B.
Which one?
Proposal page B.
B, like boy.
So in the meanwhile, you're looking to gain funds and grow funds? Is there a way that any of us may be able to contribute to you? How, how do you want us to go about that? I don't have the proposal in front of me. I think we only.
You can donate to this project.
Okay.
So technically, what happens is if you want to donate, the best way is to write a check to 2142.
Okay.
And then the treasurer puts it in his eagle fund, and then that's where he adds up his own funds. You have to transparent on how the funds, where the funds come from.
Sure.
Anybody can donate.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, I'm Kristi Mann. I'm his eagle mentor.
Okay.
Okay.
To give him some support. He's answering some of those questions. They don't know it all.
Yeah, so as far as like ear tagging it, what was your name? I'm sorry.
Matthew Magistad.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and if you were able to come to the park board and talk to them about it, I mean, there's potentially some, some funds that they have that they could maybe put towards those seedlings, too. So.
That'd be appreciated.
You'll have to blow them away and then, and then make the ask, like a good fundraiser.
And did you get the right date for that? That's April 16, not the 30.
Yep.
Okay. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a worthwhile project, and we'll see. It'll be made before we know it.
Is, is there action that you need city council to take as far as approval of a project?
Yes, on the last page of that packet, there is, like, there's a box that says beneficiary approval, and that's where I would like a signature, just so that, so you would be the beneficiary to my project.
Who has the packet?
I'm sorry?
Who has the packet? You do, okay.
Jack does. So do we need a motion or anything, Jack? Or you just put an X on the box?
I would think it would be good to have a motion for this, for the record for his project. And here's the motion that I would recommend, that the city council approve the oak wilt project for Matthew William Magistad's Eagle Scout project.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Rob, second.
Any other? Clarifying that you're approving it as beneficiaries for that purpose. So I'll make the motion. Who wants a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any other questions or discussions? We've actually had a really good discussion. Thank you. So I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. There we go.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. Our next presentation is from Linda Madsen of the 2023 Lake Center Annual Report. And in our packet, it's pages 1 through 13. Good evening, Linda. Pull that microphone right up so we can hear you echo.
Well, mayor, council members, and city staff, good evening, and thank you for inviting me and allowing me to speak for a few minutes and update you on Lake Center for Youth and Families. As was mentioned in your packet, you have our 2023 annual report as well as demographic and participation information as well. I'm not going to go through those page by page, but I will be noting some things. And if you have any questions, of course, ask this evening or in looking through it or if you think of something later, please feel free to contact me, and I'd be happy to, to talk with you. So just a little bit of history. I certainly know some of you in the room, but for 36 years, I was part of the Forest Lake School System. I started in 1981 as a junior high teacher and did that for 16 years, was a coordinator for four years. I was the director of teaching and learning for eight. And then I was the superintendent my last eight years and retired in 2017. I was on the board of Lake Center for 12 years. And in 2018, I agreed to resign from the board and help Matt Howard, who was then the executive director, with some HR and finance, you know, projects within the organization. As many of you know, Matt had an accident, and actually, that accident occurred, a car accident occurred the day before I started. So on Monday, I was part-time, and on Friday, I was the executive director. And now it's five years later. And so I retired from that in December of 2023. And now I'm the community outreach coordinator, which is a part-time position. And I am able to come to city council meetings and county board meetings and different events in the community and spread the good word about Lake Center. So it's a great part-time position, and I'm, I'm happy to have it and happy to be here. Some of you may know the history of Lake Center. It was started in 1976, so many years ago. And Jim Trudeau, who was then the Forest Lake Police Chief, is the person that started the Youth Service Bureau, as it was called then. And as youth would get into trouble, make some mistakes along the way, he would describe it as you could either ignore it or put them into the court system. And sometimes, really, there should have been a middle piece. And so that's why he created Lake Center for Youth and Families. And so we have had many programs throughout the years. This is the one program that is consistent and has, is still with us since 1976. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. Going to jump ahead to 2019 and where we are today. We've done many things internally. We've updated our employee handbook, our board handbook, our volunteer handbook, policies and procedures. We've done a needs assessment on technology, have some upgrades that we have done. We've moved to the cloud, continually working to protect our data. And we all know in this day and age that that is something that we all need to do. The pandemic during that time, of course, created issues for many nonprofits, including ours. We had two PPP loans, and I can say that pretty confidently, if we had not had those and then had them forgiven, we probably wouldn't be in existence today. And they were extremely important, and we are very thankful for being able to, to have those loans. We had to move to virtual services, and we had a two-year plan to go to virtual in some areas of our organization. And again, we had to quickly move and within a week, had to figure out how we were going to deliver services virtually. One of the things that we have recently done is as we looked at going virtual when we had to, and then when we had the option to come back, many of our services stayed virtual, our clients, and wanted that. And so we had, and some of you may have been familiar where we were last located. It's the old bakery in Forest Lake by the round, one of the roundabouts. And we moved in in 2017. It was a beautiful office space, and there were three of us that regularly came in of a full-time staff of 12. And so we each had about four offices. And so we waited for a couple of years to see where that was going to land and decided, do we want our asset in a building or do we want our assets in a bank account? So we put the space up for sale, and, you know, we're told, well, it's kind of hard to sell office space and don't be disappointed. And we sold it in five days for the asking price. So we were so fortunate. And it is a accounting firm, actually, from North Branch, who purchased it, who were thrilled to get it. And we are thrilled that they're happy to be there. We are now leasing space from the Forest Lake School System in the old, it used to be the high school years ago, Central Junior High, and now it's the Central Learning Center. So where I started my career in 1981, and now I'm back in that space. And it's working out very, very well. You can see from our annual report that our revenue sources are varied. We write a lot of grants. We have insurance reimbursement for counseling. We have county contracts that I'll talk about, events, and you have a list of events, I think that was passed out. Individuals, businesses, municipalities support us financially. And as you well know, we have charitable gaming at Running Aces and also up in Lindstrom at the grill, which is associated with a golf course that's up there. Our goals are maintained, to maintain and expand our programming while maintaining stability and financial growth, provide salaries and benefits to attract and retain staff. And I'm sure many of you are involved with that in your work as well. And to stay engaged in the community and to really adjust our programming to meet community needs. We have three areas that we have focused on for the last probably, I would say, seven years. Enrichment is the first. We have Youth First, which is funded through a grant in Chisago County at four elementary schools. It's after-school programming that is free. So taking that barrier away, and it's free. And then we have Safety Camp, which some of you may be aware of. That's been around for 20 or 25 years. It's the Forest Lake Police Department, the Fire Department, community leaders, and Lake Center that put that on. And it's a one to two-day event in the summer. In enrichment, we've had 115 clients in 2023 for 673 sessions. Intervention, that core piece that we've had for years and years, we have a contract with Chisago County with the attorney's office and Washington County as well. So they are the ones that refer to us. So they engage with youth that something has happened. They make the decision whether they go into the court system or whether they're referred to us. When they're referred to us, they, the, the youth and their parent or guardian comes in. And I say comes in, it used to be before COVID, it was that they would physically come in and meet with our staff member. And then, of course, we had to go completely virtual. And we wondered, well, what's going to happen when they can come in? 95% of our intervention clients are virtual. They prefer that. You know, mom can be in one space, dad can be in another, the youth, and then our staff person. And it's worked well. We have less or fewer no-shows and fewer cancellations with the virtual option. So that's great. We had 189 youth that came through the intervention program. And I should mention, too, the Forest Lake Police Department also can refer directly to us as well. And for 388 sessions. We have another component of intervention, and that is at Linwood Elementary. Linwood is in the Forest Lake School System. And we have a grant, and we've just received another grant for twice as much money, so $150,000 over two years. We have a full-time staff member there. And what she does is looks at that intervention piece. So if there's a first-grade class that has some behavior issues, or she's in the lunchroom or in the playground, or when you get on the bus, think of all those places where perhaps negative interactions can happen. She also, what we call it intervention and prevention. So she does a lot of things to prevent those things from happening. So I just was up there this morning, and she does a fantastic job, and she has lunch bunches. So kids sign up to talk to her about whatever is on the kindergartner's mind that day or a fourth grader or whatever. K through six is who she serves. As I said, service projects, they have a school forest, which you may be aware of at Linwood. So one of their service projects, let's research what birds are in our forest, let's build birdhouses that are appropriate, and then let's put them out there as well. So that's just one example of many. And in 2023, she interacted with 252 students at Linwood Elementary. And then counseling is our last area. We have five full-time counselors. So these are, and they're, you know, when we say counselors, there's school counselors, there's psychologists, there's psychiatrists. These are therapists that can bill for insurance. They cannot prescribe medication like a psychiatrist can, but they can bill. And they do bill. And we see them in our office, we see them virtually, and we have an inter-agency agreement with Forest Lake Schools, which we've had probably since around 2003. So parents make an appointment for their child, our therapists go in to the schools, the child comes out of whatever class they're in, has their 50-minute session, and then they go back to class. And so again, it's to take away that barrier of time for parents, transportation, et cetera. And it's, it is very successful. We could probably use three or four more counselors, and they'd be filled by just going into the schools. We had 214 clients in 2023 and 2,878 sessions. I'll also note, we have a grant through Anoka County that helps pay when parents can't pay for the full amount because they have a high deductible, they don't have insurance, whatever the case, they run into just hard times at the moment. So we utilize that. And then we also spend, last year was 20-plus thousand for 29 clients for 257 sessions for those that just can't afford. So we do not turn anyone away. So those are our three areas of enrichment, intervention, and counseling. We are, yeah, pleased to be in the community, working hard. And as I say, we're still, we're still coming back financially from the pandemic, but we feel we're on a very positive course. And again, I would be happy to answer any questions now or in the future. And I do have to say, we have September 20 on our calendar, and we will be here with a, with a booth, and, and we will be ready to play bingo.
Linda, I have a question. What do you have to pay the school district for your offices?
Oh, the lease for it? I can, I can get that number for you. I don't know it off the top of my head. And I can get you the square footage and, you know, all of that.
Please do.
Okay.
And I think the service you do is really beneficial to the schools. I hope it's a reasonable number. So anyway, anyone else?
I just had a question on how much do you think, and you might not even know this off the top of your head, but growth-wise, so starting in 1976 until now, do you think you've grown 400%, 20%?
Well, I think the first budget, and, you know, we, we put together a book for our 45th anniversary, and I think the first budget was $15,000. Our budget now is over a million. Lots of, the executive director was part-time, lots of volunteers. And it was, it was much more, there were many more programs that I would say kind of student council-like that were at the Youth Service Bureau, because the schools didn't have as many as they do now. And so it really was a gathering place. Right now, it's very hard to compete with schools and athletic, you know, teams, et cetera. So we've really looked at those and have eliminated them, actually, just because there isn't the interest. But what is their interest in and what can we, what can we do? And mental health certainly is one. We started that before there was kind of this awareness. But, you know, we sometimes have 30 to 40 people on our waitlist. And our counselors see youth as young as three, and we have clients in there. And our counselors see youth as young as three and we have clients in their 80s. So a wide range.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Linda, do you have an opinion of why there's so much need for this mental health stuff? What has changed?
I think a couple of things. I don't know that it's changed, but we have more of an awareness of the need and that there is help available. And I think through the pandemic, that conversation was just out there more and in many different situations. And I think that, that youth are more willing to say, I'm struggling and I need some help. That doesn't mean they need to go to a counselor like ours. It might be a school counselor, it might be a group at school, it might be talking to their clergy, but I think they're more, they're more willing to do that. So there was a comparison in, it was, it must have been 2000, it must have been 2020, the number of students, the first day of school at the high school that came to their counselor, came to the office and said, I'm really struggling and I need some help. It was one. In 2022, on the first day of school at the high school, it was 35. So, you know, there, there were probably some stressors that the pandemic created that weren't there before. So I think that's part of it. But also I think there's more conversation about it and it is more acceptable to say, I'm struggling and I need some help.
Thank you.
Well, Linda, I, I know a lot about the Youth Service Bureau because if you remember Bill Hutton.
Yes.
And Dave Swartz and all those guys. You guys still have theft awareness programs or is that just so old?
Do we still have what?
Theft awareness programs?
Well, you know, it is in the, for our intervention youth, there are classes that they may take. And we've made it more generic, so it's choice and consequences. And that would fit into that. Or they might have to write a letter of apology or, you know, that sort of thing.
Well, it's a great program. And I just remember being as a police officer back in the days that you didn't have nowhere to send these kids, you know? It's, you know, you keep seeing the same one over and over and over.
Yep.
Then finally, when Jim started that program and then it just kind of bloomed. But I re, I remember when it was over on South Shore Drive.
Oh, yeah.
That's when Bill Hutton was running it and Barb and.
And Barb Swanson.
Yeah. Great program.
Well, and I was a, you know, a teacher in 81. And so, you know, using that service, and I can say as particularly the Director of Teaching and Learning and when I was superintendent, most school districts do not have this option. And so if you're in a school, you know, do you, you know, most schools don't have detention anymore because it doesn't work. And suspension many times doesn't do anything for the youth that is struggling or getting in trouble. It may give the adults and maybe some kids a break from that particular student, but it's not necessarily helping that student. And sometimes when they're staying at home, that's what could be, in some cases, a worse case for them than coming to school. So having some options and having the Forest Lake Police Department, as I'm sure many of you know, that's where we have our liaison officers and have four. And I just need to say, the Forest Lake Police Department is fantastic. And working together with that and Chief Rick Peterson is just finishing up his term as Chair of the Board of Lake Center. And having those officers being able to refer directly to us and not having to go to the county saves some time and I think we reach more students as well. And now Shisago County has agreed that Neil Bauer, who is the chief in Wyoming, that the Wyoming Police Department can refer directly to us. And we view that, and Neil is also on our board as well. So that really helps when they understand what the organization is about, can relay that. And we all look at it as trying to help youth and trying to keep them out of the court system and making more positive decisions in the future.
Is Anoka County Courts referring to you or no?
No. And we have, they have been approached and they haven't been interested in that and I'm not sure why. I know Chief John Swenson, who is the Lionel Lakes Chief, is interested in doing that and is making some contacts there. So I'm not sure, but that, I know they've been approached in the past and it just, I don't think fits into what they are, are doing.
Linda, is there a Youth Service Bureau in Stillwater?
There still is.
There's, are there a lot out there in the community, I know, that area?
Not too many. There's, I think there's one other one in the western suburbs. And the Youth Service Bureau, you know, that's their name and they're located in Stillwater. And we used to be the Youth Service Bureau, but we were, we're not, we're two different organizations. We're, we've never been connected, although there's been conversation about could we broaden our scope, could we save money, could we do whatever to come together? And there've been some conversations about that, but it's never happened. But yes, they are still active and serving that southern part of Washington County.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for us?
Well, I want to say thank you. I'm so glad that you came tonight so that I could reconnect with you about Fall Fest. I'm so glad you're going to be able to come back again because it was quite a hit.
Yeah, well, thank you. And yeah, we're, we're thrilled to come back. So thank you for asking us.
No, thank you.
Linda, do you want to give us a little advertisement? We each got one of these.
Oh, good, yes, absolutely. So Taste is really our first fundraiser of the year and it is at the Scandia Creamery. So we try to have it in different locations in our service area. It was there last year as well. The good news is, is, you know, it's been hard, especially during COVID or after COVID because restaurants couldn't, didn't have enough staff. They wanted to participate, but they didn't have enough staff. Well, hope, it seems like that's getting better. So we have 14 restaurants that are signed up that will be there. So you buy a ticket and then you go there and then you walk around and then you get to try all the food that they have brought with that evening. So yeah, come and join us.
That's quite a gig. If you want to get in. I know you had it out, wine out in Lindstrom, then you had it up at the bowling alley.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we've had the taste, I think this is almost 20 years we've had the taste. Yeah.
It's well worth it.
Pretty good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If everyone would look in your packet on pages 14 through 36, this is a driveway variance at 9367 189th Avenue. And I think, Ron, you were there.
I've been to that.
I mean, you were at the planning commission.
Oh, right.
You're the liaison.
No, it was Rob.
Yeah, Ron covered the meeting before. But you want me to talk about it? I know most of the council members were there, but just the background of it, Janinski family is the applicant, 9367 189th Avenue Northeast. It's a property, they were requesting a variance to allow an additional lot of a single-family home, often existing shared driveway that was already being shared by another neighbor. The applicant is hoping to pursue a subdivision of the 40-acre property to small, sell a small portion, I believe it was five acres of land, to their child, Adam, to build a home so their families could be nearby. So that was basically the gist of it, was just they'd be adding another residential home to that shared driveway. So, and the planning commission voted to approve that.
All right. Would you like to make the motion?
Yeah, definitely. So I move to approve variance for 9367 189th Avenue, PID 25-33-22-42-0001 to increase the number of properties receiving access from an unimproved driveway from two to three in a residential rural zoning district, subject to conditions set forth in the variance staff report, PC 24-101 included as part of the application for the request.
I'll second that motion. Are there any questions anyone has or any discussion? I think we mostly were at the meeting.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we were, I was at the meeting. I was virtual. I know that they covered everything, answered all the questions. Your neighbor is okay with it. And yeah, I think everything is, everything is good. I just thank you for your patience in our process because this is the third time.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Yep, that was it.
No questions. It was all really well put together and well explained. So we really, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
I've been out to that place, so you have to pack a lunch when you leave. It is long. In fact, I'm glad to see you came through the snowstorm. You made it out, huh?
We have a guy.
We have a guy. That plows that long driveway.
So I'll call for the vote, Ron.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. There we go.
Congratulations.
As soon as the snow melts, you can steer it in. Number four, approval of the 2024 preliminary Fall Fest budgets, pages 37 and 38. Jack, would you like to explain?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After an absence of three years, Fall Fest was resumed as the city of Columbus event in September of 2023. Planning and organizing for the 2024 event has begun and certain expenses will need to be incurred prior to the conclusion of fundraising for this year's activities. Is requested that $6,000 be made available to cover the initial costs to be incurred prior to the collection of all fundraising donations from local businesses and donors. The Fall Fest account finished 2023 with a balance of $1,392.01. The city contribution for the 2024 event is $3,000, bringing the total cash available to $4,392.01 as of today. As indicated above, the balance of $1,392 is currently available from last year's carryover along with the $3,000 allocation by the city for 2024. The fundraising campaign will generate the difference, $1,608, between the current cash on hand and expenditures to cover those needs and reservations deposits that will be encountered through May 2024. Last year's solicitations collected $12,325. It is anticipated that the contributions for Fall Fest 2024 will exceed that amount as this year's fundraising will begin in April compared to last year's start, which was toward the end of June. The city contributed $3,000 to the event last year, which provided $15,325 in total revenue as compared to $13,933 in expenses. We have confirmed that certain startup expenditures incurred last year will not recur in 2024. The elimination of these expenses should cut event costs by at least $3,400. It is expected that the 2024 fundraising will equal or exceed last year's total of $12,325. This amount coupled with the city's contribution of $3,000 and expense reduction of $3,400 will provide sufficient revenues to cover the expenses for the event. City staff and event organizers are proposing a startup budget of $6,000 to pay for the upfront expenses to be incurred through May of this year for the preparation of Fall Fest 2024.
Anyone have any questions or discussion for Jack?
Well, I'm just going to make one clarification. There were some expenses as we reviewed that got allocated to Fall Fest that probably need to be moved somewhere else. So there's actually a little bit more cash on hand. It's just that the journal entries haven't been entered to move them around, so.
Those will be noticed, that will give us more than the $3,400. So the $3,400 is the minimum.
And then the second thing is that Jack and I are meeting with Lynn Carver Quinn, who's fundraiser extraordinaire and is chomping at the bit to get going again. So we'll be meeting next Wednesday to sort of set, set the, I don't know, set the gate and turn her loose. So hopefully it will all turn out as well as it did last year. I don't have any reason to believe it won't.
Yeah, no, I definitely, she was, she was working the room at Columbus and, you know, getting people to get involved, so.
She's naturally born, that's for sure.
So I think the money sounds reasonable. Start praying for good weather. We need two sunny days in September. So I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary Fall Fest budget in the amount of $6,000 and use these funds to cover costs incurred for the upfront expenses, expenses incurred prior to the conclusion of fundraising for this year's activities. Is there a second?
This is Janet, a second.
Any other questions or discussion, anyone? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Number five, meeting times for EDA City Council meetings, pages 39 and 42 through 42. Jack, you're on, you're up front again.
Thank you. Quarterly EDA meetings are scheduled on the day of and one hour prior to city council meetings on April 10th, August 14th, and November 14th of '24. Also, workshop meetings are scheduled prior to the council meetings. As EDA meetings are trending to be longer than the one-hour time allotted them, council meetings have been and can be delayed beyond their scheduled start times. To avoid this conflict, it is recommended that city council meetings following EDA regular meetings start either at 6:30 PM or that EDA meetings be scheduled for another time. Establishing a separate day for the EDA meetings would be the recommendation to avoid those conflicts. Staff is requesting direction from city council as their preference to resolve this potential overlap of meetings. There are some other conflicts in meeting schedules, but we will take these up with the park board and the EDA and those can be adjusted internally. But what we're looking to do is give these EDA meetings more time. I think we're starting to get some more momentum with the EDA and there's more discussion and there's a lot more to work through, so.
Well, I thought about, I mean, it would make sense to do it. It's nice to have it on the same night because then we don't have to come back another time. However, I think it would be confusing to everybody else to own, to have our council meeting start at 6:30, you know, four times a year.
That should be eight times.
Eight, okay.
Those are the EDA workshops.
Gotcha. So I, I don't know. I'm, I mean, it makes sense, but I think it would be confusing. So I, I don't know really what my preference is. I don't want to go to a different.
To Sue's point, is it possible just to start that EDA meeting earlier rather than having the council meeting pushed back later?
That's always a possibility. It just depends on if it meets with the schedule of this group. I did check with the two citizen members and they're open to meet on Thursdays if you wanted to move it to that day. Or if we can, we can look at starting the meeting earlier instead of, we could start at 4:30.
Yeah, because right now they start at five, so we'd have to start at 4:30.
Gotcha.
Which, I mean, I, I could make it work. It's, it's a little bit harder though. I don't know about you for, because it's on, would be on a Wednesday.
Well, my thought is that we always end up jamming everything together. Suddenly it's quarter after six and we're only halfway through. So what do you do? I can come another night. And I don't like it anymore, anybody else, but, you know, in for diamond for dollar. Or start it at 4:30, start it. It's just that there's a lot, now there seems to be so much stuff about EDA to do. You know, over the last five, six years, you just do nothing. Now things are happening. So if we're cramming everything in and cutting it all short, I want more time. I don't care where I get it, but let's make some decisions and, and whatever. And I know it's harder for you two because you're online and you're on the road.
Yeah.
But so what's the best thing? Another night or a start at 4:30 or four o'clock or whatever? Because I think the board meetings will still be as busy as they have been. Nothing's going to slack off of this work, it doesn't look like. So, and if you keep going till it's 9:30 at night and you've had two meetings, everybody's tired. And you think you make decisions that aren't as good and plus you're killing yourself. So, I don't know. Janet, what do you think?
I'm flexible.
I'm flexible. I can do whatever. I mean, I can do it on Thursdays, I can come earlier. I mean, whatever works for everybody else is fine with me.
Ron?
Well, I was just thinking that usually when we have a workshop the day before, we usually clean up a lot of the stuff that we're gonna discuss at the council meeting. I mean, it's already been discussed.
Yeah.
And we get in there and it makes it kinda quicker.
Well, would we just have the EDA workshop on a different day? 'Cause we do a kind of a combined EDA council workshop, but are you suggesting we split those, or we still have the council workshop the day before? 'Cause that does work well. I agree.
That, that would be the idea of this. I think sometimes when you combine them, you don't get enough time to get everything to go through, so.
Same problem happens with the workshop.
Yeah, and, and again, again, the, the object would be to either start the EDA workshop or EDA quarterly meetings earlier or to move it to a different date. And again, it's gonna depend on people's schedules, whatever we can work out with everybody.
Well, maybe what we could do with the workshop is just, you know, hold the workshop prior to the meeting. You could, that way you could, kinda like what Rice Creek does, or isn't it Rice Creek? Somebody does it where, oh, no, it's Forest Lake that does their workshop like an hour or two hours before their meeting, so they do their workshop first and then they do their, their meeting, so maybe we could do that for EDA, and then it would still just be four, four additional meetings, four additional meeting nights.
So the workshops would still be on Wednesday?
No.
They're on Tuesdays with our other workshop.
Correct.
So wherever you move the EDA meeting, you'd have the workshop an hour or two hours or however you wanna do it beforehand. So the workshop and the meeting would be the same night, you just do the workshop first, for, just for EDA, not for council.
Yeah. So you would do an EDA workshop, no council meeting, because it's on a Tuesday?
Yeah, you do an EDA workshop, and then if there was a meeting scheduled for that time, you know, for those four times, you do a workshop, then the meeting, just EDA. Then you don't have eight meetings, you only have four.
But then start it early, start it, start it at four-thirty, so we have an hour and a half to do the EDA, EDA things.
Hang on, I'm confused.
Yep.
It would work if you move the, okay, start, start over. Move the EDA meeting to a different day.
Okay.
So if it's on a Thursday, say, you could do the, you could do the workshop prior to the EDA meeting and then do the meeting, so you'd have four Thursdays a year that you do EDA, all things EDA.
I don't know if we'll run into confusion, though, or, you know, with the fireboard, you know, that's quarterly, or it can be up tomorrow, and that's on Thursdays at five o'clock.
Fireboard is usually, well, the next one is April eighteenth, six PM.
Or you could do it on Tuesdays and just do it a different Tuesday.
Do we move them to six or five?
The last one was at five o'clock.
Yeah.
Hang on.
I think we moved that up because then Elizabeth didn't have to hang around as long with Jack.
That was a tax meeting on April eighteenth.
Yep. Cancel that, hang on. But anyway, well, a couple of us can skip out of this and go.
Yeah, okay.
It's not the end of the world, I guess.
So if we did, and I kinda like that idea of doing them both together on a Thursday, a separate night, but not on the same week that we would have a regular workshop on a Tuesday, so we'd have Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday in the same week, would that happen? I, I wouldn't like.
Let's not, let's not have that happen.
Okay.
Let's not schedule it so it's three days in a row.
That's when I start to go.
All right, I'm up for that. I'm down for that.
Does that work for you, Ron?
Yeah.
All right, what, do you need a motion or?
Yeah, since this is an approved schedule, we need a motion to change it. The schedule is not approved by resolution, so we can just do a motion here to change those meeting times and make that part of the new city meeting schedule.
Well, do you wanna give us four Thursday dates, and we can make sure that, or do you want the actual dates, or do you just wanna say TBD?
Why don't we just refer to it as EDA meetings and EDA workshop, and then we'll adjust this and send it out to everyone.
Mr. Mayor, Council, since the meeting dates are approved at the beginning of the year by schedule, you would need to come back then with a specific schedule.
Yeah.
Have it be part of your next agenda.
We would bring that up for publication and approval, yeah.
So are we just, are we just directing staff to come back with dates that we can approve then, so it's not really a motion, it's just a direction?
That, that, that's fine, too, either way, so.
So, here, I'll direct staff to look at moving the EDA workshop and meeting to a Thursday concurrent with one another, workshop first, then EDA meeting, and not the same week that we have the council workshop and council meeting.
I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion?
Now I'm confused.
What do you think, Ron?
Well, it's not what I think. The workshop's gonna be on a Thursday.
And the meeting.
And the meeting of the EDA.
Same day.
So the workshop is, is dealing with EDA?
Yes.
Oh, it's not our workshop?
Correct. We're gonna split it.
'Cause we've had, we've had combined workshops for EDA and council, and we run into the same problems. We run in, we run out of time for EDA because we have to start our council workshop.
Okay, yeah, I'm okay.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
And this is just for direction, and then you'll come back with the schedule.
Cut it.
And because it's mid-year, we, we need to publish it. We avoid publication when we set the meeting schedule for the year at your organizational meeting, but changes mid-year will need to be published.
Well, I think that's a good idea, though, because there seems to be so much going on all the time. If we have a nice evening just for EDA stuff, you can hammer through a lot of things, make decisions, get it done, and.
Sometimes you're forced to make decisions, 'cause you got the council meeting coming.
Well, that's not good either, though. All right, city engineer report, Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just one quick item, just wanted to bring to your attention, and I don't know if Jack has received this notice yet, but Forest Lake is conducting an open house for Eureka Avenue Monday, April fifteenth from four-thirty to six-thirty, and so I was, I was notified by their city engineer of this meeting, and if you would like to have me attend, or if you would plan to attend as well, I guess maybe just some direction on, I have no problem attending that open house, and I guess, obviously, it's open house, so anybody can attend, so.
Did you say April fifteenth or sixteenth?
Fifteenth, tax day.
Okay.
So if you have your taxes done, then you should be able to go.
On Monday.
What time is it?
Four-thirty to six-thirty.
Thank you.
And we haven't received that notice yet, so.
Yeah, you probably will receive it at some point now.
Okay.
And where is it at?
I was just gonna say that. You probably said all those things to us at least once, and now you get to say it again.
At City Hall in their conference room.
All right.
Yeah, we can go up there and see what they're doing. Why not? I remember when it was a dirt road.
You remember we used to swim in the, in the ponds that are now thirty-five W and thirty-five E, so.
It's all an improvement compared to that.
And, yeah, then they just throwed recycle asphalt on it for a while, right?
Just think. Anything else, Kevin?
That's all I have.
Before we go on, there's another item before that, and there's a proposed agenda for our work meeting for April tonight.
It's item number six on the, on the top.
Nope.
Skipped over.
Sorry.
And all I'm asking is if those are the topics you want to discuss, if you want to add anymore, or you want to delete any of them.
Can I ask what's on there, because I think I've got a couple things that I'd like.
There are two items for you. There's the corridor study, Lake Drive corridor study, and the water system improvement study report.
Correct.
And then there's also, we want to discuss that ordinance amendment for chapter fourteen for the septic changes, and I don't think we're gonna have a lot, and I thought about initially leaving this off, 'cause it could be, dominate the whole thing, but there will be an update on the cannabis ordinance. We've reached out to nine surrounding municipalities to see what their status is, to see if anybody's got any kind of ordinance in place, and contacted the league, and of course, everybody's still waiting on the league, and we'll just kinda give an update on that. I'd like to leave that on there if we can. If we don't have time to do it, we can postpone it, but those are the four items I would like to propose for the work meeting.
So item four is just staff-led?
Excuse me?
Item four, the cannabis is just staff-led?
Correct.
Okay.
And what we'll do, we'll give a report on what the status is with the surrounding communities. Most of them are like us, everybody's in a holding pattern. The city of Isanty has actually done one, and we'll have that just for everybody's review.
Okay, great, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, this doesn't need to change the items. I just would note that we received the ordinance amendment for chapter fourteen today, so that would be a week turnaround on a pretty extensive ordinance.
Oh, it's beautiful, though. I've been working hard with, with Chris on, and you're gonna look at it and go, oh, there's nothing to do here. It's perfect.
And that would be great. So we will endeavor to get it done in a week, but just, just a note, we love beautiful ordinances.
Clean and concise. All right, sorry I skipped that. So that's fine, that'll keep us busy a couple hours. And that was it from you, Kevin. Uh-huh. Seat attorney report, Bill.
Mr. Mayor and Council, a couple things. First, an update on the Columbus apartments. We were endeavoring to get ready for a April fifteenth closing, and we had held a meeting, virtual meeting during the snowstorm with staff and all the parties involved, the Harchenkos, who have a purchase agreement with the city, the Fishers, which wanted to step into the shoes of the Harchenkos. Two things have kinda disrupted that schedule. One is the financing market still haven't opened up. Interest rates are still high, the Fed has not lowered interest rates, and so initially, the Fisher family was looking for a longer runway to start the project. As they got into the project details, the plans, and admittedly, I'm kinda late in the due diligence period, they said the, the plans did not, were not efficient, did not work for them in terms of their architectural review, because they essentially want to change unit sizes, unit mix, and maximize the number of units to a hundred and fifty-nine units, which is allowed under the current zoning. So with that, we said, well, that would necessitate a trip back through the planning commission and city council, and so essentially, you wouldn't be stepping into the approvals of the Harchenkos. Those changes were too significant to just essentially run by the council, you know, and, and have you bless them. So they understood that, they expected that response from us as a city, and so they, they essentially said, well, we would still like to work with you, we would like to build this project, but if we're going to submit new plans, then we would need, you know, approximately a hundred and twenty days to do that. So our options are to terminate, cancel the, the purchase agreement with the Harchenkos, which we would recommend in any case, there's been any number of extensions. They certainly have had plenty of swings at the, at the project, and, and to continue working with the Fisher family. And the Fisher family, as we noted back in November, has significant real estate experience. They have a number of properties under management, six point, or five point five billion of retail and medical assets under management. They've invested over the years in five thousand apartment units, and they have now taken on their own as a developer for projects in the metro area and, and in Mankato. So if, if you prefer not to follow that option, so in any case, we, we think it's time to cancel the purchase agreement with the Harchenkos, and I don't think they'll find it as a surprise. If you would like us to negotiate with the Fisher family, we'll, we'll do that straight away. They have a high degree of interest in, in developing here. Or the third option would be to simply go back to the market and see who comes out, you know, we'd probably have to do more than our, our signs. You know, we might consider a broker, we might consider a broker for multiple sites. So that's really what we're looking for direction on. I think the advantage, you know, one advantage of working with the Fishers is they've done a fair amount of due diligence, they seem to be capable, they're willing to, you know, work with the standards that exist in that district. We told them that there was no, going to be no reduction in materials and quality that was well-vetted the last time around. And one of the things we also noted on the conversation is that the park fees will be under the new park fee schedule. So there, there won't be any break on park fees, and that means about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our, our parks, park fund. So to recap what the cost, the benefits of the city would be, we'd have a known developer in hand, we would have an eight hundred thousand dollar purchase price, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of park fees or thereabouts, and approximately two hundred thousand dollars of special assessments. So a decent return to the city doesn't mean that by putting it back on the market, we couldn't do better, but we wouldn't have a closing in a hundred and twenty days, would be my guess. It would be more like, you know, next year sometime, and, you know, that's probably a best guess. So that's the, that's the update. We're looking for your direction, first of all, to concur with the recommendation that we cancel the existing purchase agreement, and second, whether or not to continue working with the Fisher family.
Kinda lost your bill that, so if we cancel that deal, that ten and fifteen or twenty thousand that they gave us, one of these extensions, we keep?
Correct.
Okay, so how much did we get, twenty?
We got ten when they extended last year, and then at the end of the year, we asked for another ten in order to extend the purchase agreement that's still alive.
So.
So we got ten, and there's ten in escrow. And we have costs, so the question would be, would we recover those costs through the escrow, or would we recover the cost directly? I did say on the call that we expect to recover our costs, whether or not this purchase agreement is alive, because those costs were incurred by the city.
So the Harchenkos want out, is what I'm hearing, so we either let it run out, or we cancel it, and the end result is the same with the Harchenkos, right?
Correct. The statute that applies here requires cancellation, so there's actually a form of cancellation. We would wait until April fifteenth, which is the closing date, then on April sixteenth, we'd send a notice of cancellation.
Okay, and then with the Fishers, would they enter into a purchase agreement that would just have a longer end date, or would they move forward with a CUP, PUD application? I mean, how does that work? Do they, do they do both things at the same time, or?
Yes. They would want land control in order to make an application, so the first step would be to enter into a purchase agreement, probably on very similar terms, maybe, probably less due diligence time period, because they've already done a fair amount of due diligence, but the hundred and twenty days is for them to get through our process. And, and we made it clear, at least I think it was clear, that the reason we would do that is 'cause we wanna close with you on the property. Whether or not you bill this year, we want to have that transaction closed, 'cause otherwise, then we just go back to the market. If you're not interested in buying the property at the end of that hundred and twenty days, then the city would sit on the property, market the property, you know, go after other apartment developers, other users, so that's, that message was, the city wants to be able to close on this property, they've extended the purchase agreement many times, and, and I think that message got through to them.
And I agree with Bill, that was clearly conveyed, that that was the timeframe that we were looking at and our expectations.
Okay. And then is it your sense that they are going to stick with the building material quality and, I mean, 'cause, you know, that's where we fell apart with Apollo, is they, you know, proposed something, and then when they were crunching their numbers, it's like, oh, we need more units and less brick. So you don't at least anticipate that, I know anything can happen, but, I mean, I'm a little worried just with the increase of unit size, 'cause I thought that's where we ran into problems with parking, we couldn't provide enough parking for, and I think Apollo also tried to hit to that maximum, if I remember correctly, too.
Yeah, they, they would like to decrease unit size and increase unit number, so with less bedrooms, probably less people, perhaps less cars, I mean, that, that analysis needs to be done, and one of the reasons we said. be done. And one of the reasons we said, you need to go back through the process so we can see everything you're proposing. We did indicate that, and I can, if we, if we get direction to keep working with the Fishers, I can reiterate that the building material standard was of paramount importance the last time around and would be this time as well. I do think, I'm just going to comment, that we, our parking standards are some of the highest that I've seen. Two per unit is pretty high for the metropolitan average. It's usually 1, 1.5, 1.1, 1.3. So there may be some ability to play with that. The council did agree to a proof-of-parking plan on the last one, so maybe there's a dynamic where some of that shifts into the proof-of-parking plan. So I expect them, when they get down to, you know, final number crunching, they will look at that 2.0 requirement and go and say that we're on the high end. Also, our dimensions for some of those parking spaces are larger. Our argument is that, you know, more people have larger vehicles in the northern suburbs and some of the outer-ranked communities. All I have to do is look in this parking lot. There's more trucks here, you know, than others. So, you know, those are the areas where we're going to have discussion, and ultimately, the Planning Commission, the council will decide. But I think, I think to your point, council member, it is important for having gone through two developers now, that we convey that one of the areas that we don't want to compromise on are the building standards. So if you don't think you can meet our building standards, then really, you don't need to waste your time and our time.
And they're still looking at market rate, correct?
Yes.
So Bill, this is, wouldn't turn out to be a Hy-Vee piece of property where they have to build it?
Yes, we have changed our, you know, it's the fool-me-once concept. We have changed our approach to purchase agreements. And we would do so, as Jack Davis and I have already talked about, on the other side of the highway. And that is a right to repurchase. So if they don't start in a given amount of time, we're going to exercise a right to repurchase to get our property back, so that doesn't sit undevelopable. And, you know, when people push back, I hope the council agrees with that, that approach, that we need to have a right to move the property into development.
All that does is push them a little, right? Speed them up, either cut fish or cut bait or whatever.
Gives them an end date. And it gives a real remedy, rather than just, you know, calling Hy-Vee, saying, when are you going to build? And, you know, we definitely wanted Hy-Vee, and we asked for a right to repurchase, and they said no. Now we're just telling developers, that's the price of playing in this market.
Very soon.
No, I was just going to say, on the, and I'm okay with the canceling the agreement with Harchenkos. The other one, you know, going forward, if we weren't going to go with them, and we had to put it back on the market and go through that whole process again, we may end up with them anyway, right? Because it's been, I mean, it was on the market. We didn't have a lot of companies that came to us. A couple did, and we were, we didn't go with them. So what I'm saying is, we're not going to get a flood of options coming if we did open it up. Probably this one, or, I don't know if there would be any other ones, but.
But you know, this, it's been tied up in a purchase agreement for what, pretty much three years?
Over two years.
Yeah. I mean, so you couldn't entertain another buyer anyway. So it was tied up with Apollo for a year or more, and then there was a little break, and then Harchenkos came in. So I don't, I have no idea what the, what the interest might be, because it hasn't really been available.
I think Apollo and Harchenkos are the same thing, though, right?
They are. There was another developer prior to.
Ebert.
Yep, prior to.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
Thank you, yeah.
I knew what you meant.
Yeah, yeah.
And Ebert wanted us to give them the world in return for them to put some shitty building in our facility.
Yes, indeed.
How do you really feel about that?
Oh, I just, they were trying to break down our standards. I mean, you went through it. Excuse my language.
No, no, I agree. It was, it was a good one to walk away from.
Yeah. You know, you could go either way, because, you know, it's been a while, and we expect the Fed to start taking some action. But until they do, you know, we don't really have another bird in the hand. This is the bird in the hand. And I would recommend that if you decide not to go with either one, that you do a much more fulsome look at marketing brokers, you know, really go back to square one. Because, you know, we do expect at some point, things are going to loosen up in the financing markets, and that this is still a good apartment site. So really, it's your call. You could even, we could wait the two weeks till April 15, and we could have a discussion, you know, even at the EDA or otherwise. I just, as long as the Fisher family's kind of on the line, I'd like to be fair to them and say, yes, we'd like to negotiate with you. Until we have a purchase agreement, you know, until we cancel the purchase agreement and have a new one, the land isn't really tied up.
Is the market value of that property pretty much the same as it was when we started down this path with the Harchenkos? I mean, so if they just made a similar offer, we would still, that's still a good offer for today's rates, or?
Yes. I mean, I think the answer is yes, but you can always, we're looking at the parcel across, you know, that's closer to City Hall here, that's across from Holiday. And as we look, look at that value and update those values, we could also do the same. The, the two things that affect, you know, so when you're looking at a piece like Hy-Vee, which was higher value, it's a smaller parcel for a high-value commercial use, it's always going to be different than a larger parcel that's for an apartment project. And we had those two prior developers asking for city subsidy. And in this case, the Fisher family is not asking for a subsidy. So the question is, when you add up the $800,000 purchase price, the $200,000 of assessments, and now 1.5 potential, or 150,000 of park fees, you're over $1,105,000, something like that. So, so, you know, it's getting to the point where we're back to, is it going to pencil out?
Yeah. No, okay.
Okay, Bill. I'm one of the people who thinks the bird in the hand is better than starting to pound in for sale signs. So how do we proceed?
If the, yeah, if the council gives us that direction, we will work over the next couple of weeks to terminate the existing purchase agreement and enter into a new purchase agreement. We'll have to bring that to you for approval. We would likely do that in a closed session, although we've been pretty open right here about the numbers. And, and that would be just like you've gone through on any other of the sites that you've sold. And then with that, go ahead, if they know that they can get the site under control. I mean, they talked in the call about having the architects look at the design in the interim. So they were talking about investing some time with their architects over the next couple of weeks. Because they, they said to us, we said, okay, you want, you want time to build if the market's slow. But they said, our objective is to break ground in 2024. And if not in 2024, to break ground in 2025. They don't want to keep pushing it out, because they're sitting on an asset then that's not returning anything to them.
Do you need two separate motions for this? One to cancel the purchase agreement, and one to move forward with the Fishers, or can?
Yes.
Well, then I would, I would move to proceed with canceling the purchase agreement with the Harchenkos.
I'll second.
Any other questions?
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
And then I would move to have you proceed to start working with the Fishers on a new, a new purchase agreement and application for a CUP, PUD.
I'll second that. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have a question. What's the name of their development firm? Is it like the Fisher Family Foundation, or is it?
It's DLF Investments LLC.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and then one other thing. So now by doing this, we're allowing essentially Harchenkos to sub-lead, or they're pretty much just handing off what, what they had put forth, or they're going to have to come through our whole process of building standards again? Because you had, you had said they're looking to do lesser units, smaller unit sizes. They'll have to come through that whole approval process.
Yes.
Before we say, yeah, we'll sell, send you, sell you the land. Is that?
Correct. The prior arrangement was they were going to step into the plans and position of the Harchenko development and their ownership. And now they've decided to push that aside, because it's not, it's not feasible for them.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Anyone? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
And I dismiss. Was there a second on the second motion?
Yes.
Yeah, Sue or me, one of the two.
Yeah, there was a tie.
Oh, she was first.
I was first. Yeah, but then I heard what we heard. It doesn't matter. We got it well, we got it well seconded.
It's all seconded up.
It's all seconded up.
Who's on the first?
Perfect.
All right. Anything else?
Yes, just, I sent to you an email earlier today with a brief legislative update. So we have bills. Woo-hoo!
Yay.
So I'll just give you a quick recap. You can, you can look at that email if you want to look them up online. Oh, perfect. And it worked.
Well, it did. It didn't say a lot. I couldn't find where the actual bill was.
Okay. It says up at the top, as introduced, and that is where you click for the link.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So we have two bills on the Hornsby project. One is a bill that is for bonding, to include, to be included in state bonding. That amount would be the 615,000, the number we've been using. And the second is for a cash appropriation. And the reason, the strategy is you do both, because in the last couple of years, when there's been extra cash, they've made cash appropriations rather than adding to the bonding requests. So that's two bills on Hornsby, and then one bill on the fiscal disparities relief program. We have another version that's kind of pending, that would be a pilot of sorts. It would be an Anoka County-only bill. So then the cost of the program would be much less, and it would be kind of on, on a trial. There's no end date. We didn't specify an end date. That bill has not been introduced. It might be offered if we start to get pushed back on the, on the larger bill. So it gives us a total of six bills introduced, three in the Senate and three in the House. So we're, it's like March Madness. We're at the dance. And now, thank you. The next step would be to get hearings on the bills in, in both bodies. So we're working with our authors. The nice thing about the Hornsby bills is Senator Kroom was able to find multiple co-authors. So.
I saw. He had to quit a nice list.
Yeah. So, and I believe he did on the fiscal disparities as well. So he worked to get multiple authors. So we appreciate that.
Just send him a, thank you.
Well, we can all, we can all go down to the Rusty Bumblebee, or whatever, whatever it's called and celebrate if he pulls this one off.
The Rusty Bumblebee?
That's his, isn't that his tavern that he owns in Blaine? I think it is, isn't it?
Kroom?
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
Anything else, Bill?
Not the Rusty Cow.
That's all I have.
It's not the Rusty Cow. I've been there, too. That's a good one, but it's not that.
Public Works Report, Jim.
Just a little update, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Did you skip over the mayor and council reports?
And enforcement.
Sure did.
Want to do yours first?
Hold it. Okay, Ron, anything? May I use your part?
No, nothing.
Sue.
I'm going to let Janet do the personnel committee report, but I may have comments as she goes along.
Ron and I went to the fire, fire board last Thursday. Nothing drastic. There's a little bit of an uptick in cardiac arrest. And I said, is that because so many old people live up here or not? And he said, no, it's all fentanyl. Everybody's loading up on fentanyl and having heart attacks. So anyway, other than that, it's the same old thing.
I can't believe that they put their report on, you know how much ink that used?
Truck backed up to my house and filled my tanks.
Yeah, but it has sort of the look of a fire, right?
Well, it does. What is very cool, but.
Yep.
Well, that's Forest Lake.
And he said, everything on the other side of the doors, where the fire trucks are, he said, that's all great. The response times are quick, and there's a whole list of them. And everything is good. The hard part, of course, is doing the paperwork, which is never-ending and evermore. But I think everybody was in good spirits.
As in addition to Jesse's comments, I did reach out to Mr. Newman, and he will be at our April 24 council meeting to go over some of the proposed costs for some of the equipment they want to buy and the positions they're proposing to apply for a grant. And he will go over those with the council to show what budget impacts they would have.
And I forgot, Jack was at the meeting with us. So it was all three of us. We had him cornered. We had him boxed in. So the biggest possible expense coming up, I have to share this, because it just kills me. It's a $200,000 electric car fire putter outer.
What? Is that the technical name of it?
When the electric cars start on fire, they're like 5,000 degrees, I think he said. And there's a little hole somewhere, the size of a quarter, and the fire blows out of there like a.
Rocket torch? Oh, my gosh.
And he said, if that's parked in a garage, or under an apartment building, or under anything, you cannot even get in there to do anything about it. So there's a robot, firefighting robot and supporting equipment, 200K. So anyway, it's kind of on the wish list, and there's also a public safety money available for that. But he says, the more of these things they build, more of these electric cars, the more it becomes important. And there hasn't been any around Minnesota, I think he said, that, that he had record of. But somewhere, electric car pulled under a bridge in California, probably, and melted the cement bridge. They had to replace the whole bridge because of the heat of that.
Oh, my gosh.
That battery.
Yep, of the battery.
So we can't just ban electric cars here?
We can, but I don't know. We got to vote. You ought to make a motion.
I sure would.
So anyway, that was our meeting that night. It was pretty good.
Are they going to have a name-the-robot contest?
Sparky.
You could just, you could think of some really good ones, I think.
With, with that, did they bring up like, you know, rechargeable batteries, like lithium-ion batteries for, say, or DeWalt, or Milwaukee, or whatever? I know that's kind of been an uptick of fire cause. My wife always says, do you unplug your battery chargers before we go to bed, you know?
Well, he did bring up one point, that if you stick with the vendor that you get, whatever, like your phone, stick with their chargers, most of the fires they see come from these, what do they call them?
Aftermarket.
Secondary aftermarket. Or aftermarket ones, because that's where a lot of the fires are starting, that they're seeing. But it was just amazing that he said they had like 200 apart, no, 20 apartment buildings?
Underground.
Underground. And we're going to have one over here. So maybe we'll use that $200 robot.
Well, when you think of it, aye, aye, aye. If that was blowing out of there 5,000 degrees.
Well, he said it just destroyed a whole building. He said the whole building was shot. Yeah.
So what do you do?
You get sparky.
Yeah.
Report-wise?
Yep.
Yeah, so last Friday, I attended the Met Council State of the State event. I had a special invite. But so what came out of that is they had a presentation of what's going on with the Met Council. Some of the highlights were 36% of projects that were permitted in the state of Minnesota were built around transit, whether that's rail lines or bus lines, which is a big number. They said 53,000 residential units have been built around Met Council transit in the last couple of years. In the last year, 45 million rides have been taken via the train or tram, whatever you'd like to call it, rail. They spoke of some livable communities grants that are available through Met Council. There's also money available to create city centers for communities that don't typically have a city center. I know we've talked about, you know, where's our downtown? What is, what is that? They said they'll be raising up to $22 billion here annually. 85% of that will be the sustained existing transit systems, whether that be the green, blue, gold expansions, bus systems, and things of that nature. And was able to sit on and have conversations with our former Met Council rep, Sue Vento, who spoke highly of everyone here on the council that she had met, was able to make connections with Gail Sederberg, or Cedarberg, who is our current rep. She lives out of Matamita area. And I'm not sure if it was a workshop I wasn't at, did we have Met Council come in at all to do some sort of presentation?
We haven't since Sue left us.
Okay.
Sue had been out.
So maybe it was Sue saying that she had been here, but Gail was expressing if there's anything we needed from her. I was able to write some of the things, you know, that were important to us, whether it's parks, walking trails, things like that, that we were looking to, you know, possibly get grants for, or whatever it may be. I did make connection with a couple individuals. I brought up the fact that. I did make connection with a couple of individuals. I brought up the fact that, you know, bringing possible sidewalk down Notre Dame from the school to the park to connect those two was able to actually have good conversations around that about how we can possibly apply through grants through them to make more accessible sidewalks and avoid people walking on the street and using sidewalks. So, I'll, I'll keep continuing them conversations.
Olivia?
Thank you.
Rob, you said that she's going to raise 22 million. From where?
So, the 22 million, was it million or billion? That was, that was what the Met Council is going to, it's billion. That's what they'll raise to contribute back into the Met Council. That's through taxpayer dollars.
Oh.
I don't know why they call it raising, more like levy.
So, 22 billion more taxes for trails. And then, did anybody say what the cost per rider is on that train stuff?
They did not, no.
Next time you're down there, push them.
Yeah, no, definitely.
Like a hundred bucks a ride from the stuff I read.
Yeah.
And...
For light rail?
No, no, to ride on the, that's what it costs to run the trains per rider.
Did we get reached out to attend that thing? So, I'd only heard about it through a coworker that sits on Met Council for Anoka County?
We get the council at like, what, every week? We get a Met Council updater every couple of weeks through our email.
Yeah.
So, if you read that, I think it was posted in there, but...
Sure.
Well, that would be just two good points to ask them.
Okay.
Next time you're down there.
Absolutely.
Janet, you're up.
Well, okay. You're skipping about, you're skipping, do you want, I, I don't have anything for my report. Do you want to do Public Works and then I'll do the person? We actually have it as an agenda item, as the Personnel Committee.
Under seven.
If you want to go, go.
Okay. It's, I don't care. Okay, so I will, I will just go. So, we have a, in your packet on page 44, there's a Personnel Committee report. There's two items on here. The first requires action. The second does not. It's just a informational thing. The one that is going to require action is on our Accounting Assistant. So, this was a position that was approved in January. This is the, it's a new position we haven't had before to work with Cheryl and really take over some of the day-to-day accounting tasks, the accounts payable, accounts receivable, payroll, things like that, so that she can focus on the higher-level accounting needs as well as generating reports and doing some forecasts and things like that that we have wanted for a long time as a council and have not had the ability to get for the most part because, because she's too busy trying to do everything else. So, we posted the position on February 23rd. We had a tremendous response. We posted it in a number of places. There were 71 resumes that were submitted. Most of these were through Indeed. Every single one of them got a response from me saying, thanking them for the response and, and directing them to submit their applications through our recruitment website. 29 people did do that. So, there were 29 applications that were completed that included a resume and a application and a cover letter. Those were evaluated and scored by Cheryl and by Jack. And then, from that group, eight were, eight applicants were invited to interview. There were two people that were invited but didn't respond, and so there were a total of six candidates that were interviewed. The interviews were done over a two-day period. Three of them were done with Councilmember Wagaman present, and three of them were done with me. And the other two people were Jack and Cheryl that were part of the, the interview team. I have to say, this was really an exceptional pool of candidates. There was really a, a number of people that could have, that could have success, been successful in this position. But we got a person who was like a dream candidate. She came to us having worked in four other cities in an accounting position. She also worked as a, as a clerk, city clerk and a treasurer. She knows Banyan, which is the accounting system that we, that we use. She's done utility billing. In fact, she loves utility billing. And she, so pretty much she does everything and has done everything and has done it for many different cities and also can do elections in her spare time. So, she was very excited about, about coming here, and we, I think we'll be very fortunate to get her. I believe she came in and filled out all her paperwork, and so what we need tonight is a motion to extend an offer of employment to her. Her name is, is Mary Tomnitz. She is a resident of Scandia, but her daughter lives here in Columbus, and her husband had a business here in Columbus, so she knows our area quite well. And, and she's very excited to start working. Sue, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
Nope. I will move to approve the recommendation of the Personnel Committee for the hire of Mary Tomnitz to the full-time position of Accounting Assistant at Step 1 of the 198-point pay scale grade of 25, $25.91 per hour with benefits subject to the completion of a satisfactory background check.
And I'll second that.
I have one question, or yeah, a question. How long does this background check take?
We got notice from the Sheriff's Department that it could take up to three weeks. We were in the process of getting references for some private firms that can do this and possibly turn it around in two days. So, hopefully I'll have that information received by tomorrow, and we can reach out to them and get this done and hopefully maybe get the results back by the first of next week.
And then she would start on the eighth? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I just had the question as far as this money is in our budget that we just currently approved.
Yeah. So, when we came forward in January, we said that we would, we have a budget that we had set aside for a planner, Planning Associate, and we've not hired that position, and we're still kind of on hold for hiring that. So, we were going to use those funds.
Okay.
And it, so it's budget neutral.
And just remain with using Dean as currently, okay.
And, and Ellie as the...
Ellie.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote. Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
And then the second thing is just really an update. So, as you know, we have the City Administrator position posted. It closed on Monday, the 25th at midnight. We actually received a very healthy response to this posting as well. There were 38 resumes that were submitted. 24 of these came in through Indeed. We had seven that were funneled to us through the League of Minnesota Cities or GovernmentJobs.com. We had four from personal, personal referrals, one from LinkedIn, and then two, we, we didn't know where they came from. So, there were 16 complete applications that we evaluated. We scored them yesterday and did a marathon session online to discuss every single one of them and have selected six that would move forward as semifinalists. I can't tell you who they are because at this point, this is still confidential information. But what will happen is that we'll be scheduled, we'll be notifying these people that they were semifinalists. We'll be setting up video interviews during the week of April 12th and through the 16th. Those video interviews will be done by Ellen Hendricks when she's, when she's back. They will be recorded, and then you all will get access to those as well as to the application packets. And we will set up a special meeting to decide who our two finalists will be. And I think one of the things we need, we should do tonight is set a date for that special meeting. So, the thought I had was that if we're doing interviews for 12 through 416, we could look at our, on or around our April 24th council meeting. You could do it at a council meeting if you think you want to tag it on to everything else that's on the agenda. Or we could look at the day before the council meeting, which is a Tuesday. I looked at my calendar. I don't think there's a workshop scheduled that day. But we could do a, we could call a, a special meeting for April 23rd, and then that would be the only point of business that we would be conducting. When you get everything, it's going to be de-identified, again, because they're semifinalists. So, it'll be a, you know, recorded meeting and, and, and public can attend if they want to. So, we'll be discussing them as candidate A, B, C, D, not as people.
Okay. So, your, your thought is that we would, the interviews will take place between the 12th and the 16th?
Mm-hmm.
And then everybody has to review the videos and the, all the information and be ready to discuss on that special meeting?
Well, that's one way. It's, it's a tight timeline, but otherwise then it pushes on another two weeks. So, it, we can do, we can do it. If we want to push it on another two weeks, we certainly can.
Do we have to discuss it at a city council meeting? Or I, I'm just wondering, why, why would we have to go two more weeks?
Oh, you mean to do another, a special meeting? We could, we could do the special meeting in between too, if there was a day that worked for everybody.
But is it something we have to, so we're going to have to vote on it? Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to vote on it, and then, so that'll narrow, narrow down the candidates to two finalists. And then the two finalists will be brought in for in-person interview with the council. There will be a opportunity for the staff to meet with them and, and talk to them, and then a, a opportunity for them to be addressed by the public as well. I mean, at least that was the plan that we put forth when we kind of laid out the search process.
Okay.
So, I'd say it's a pretty important decision for everyone.
But Sue brings up a really, Sue brings up a really good point. I mean, you're probably talking about, if you actually watch the interviews, you're probably talking about close to six hours of interviews, because they'll be about 45 minutes apiece. And then you'll have, you know, their resume, their application, their letters of reference, their cover letter to look at. And then what I'm hoping we'll have prepared, and I know that Ellen is planning to do this, is sort of a summary of her impressions. I also think there will be the, the assessment that she would give each of these two. And I think that the results from that would be in there too, the job skills assessment.
We could, could we share the resumes of those candidates prior to 16th? That way they could start reviewing?
We, we can. We're going to have to de-identify them.
Oh, yeah.
I think. Isn't that the rule? You have to, everything has to be confidential until they're named as finalists.
I would check with Megan.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
We could talk about it at our Personnel Committee meeting next week.
Yep, yep. But I think, and we can, we can pick two weeks from now to talk about this too, but then, you know, it's just pushing it out. And, and there's nothing wrong with that. We can certainly push it out. We have a very capable interim. But I, I am anxious to get this resolved so we can move forward.
So, what?
So, if you thought...
About the 25th of April, possibly.
That would work. That would work. That doesn't have to be a Tuesday.
Five o'clock or 5:30 or...
And it's a special meeting, so we're taking action. We don't have to, you know, oftentimes we do our workshop, and then we do the, the action item at our, we don't need to do it that way for this. We'll be calling a special meeting, so you're going to be taking action. You don't need to have it be like the next day is the council meeting.
So, that would be the night the candidates come. We've already read everything.
No, no, no. You'll, it'll be the night that you will have gotten access to the videos and all the paperwork. And then we will meet to discuss the six semifinalists and choose two of, from those six to move on to be finalists. And there will be no recommendation from the Personnel Committee. You will get everything we've gotten, and you can, you will all, you will all have an equal opportunity to weigh in.
So, after you guys, at your next meeting on Tuesday, right? Then tell us what, what do you think we should do?
No, no, no. We don't, we don't get...
Or do you want to schedule that meeting tonight?
We either can schedule it tonight, or you can say, "We're not going to schedule tonight. We're going to wait for two weeks," and we'll schedule it at our next council, council meeting.
So, we're practically on April 1st, right? So, if you go for two more weeks, on the 18th is our LBAE meeting, Thursday.
Well, just remember, the videos are going to take place the 12th through the 16th, so you can't have it before that anyways, and you got to have some time after that for us to put it all together and for you to have time to review it.
So, what does everybody think of the 25th? We're back to that. Or Monday, the 22nd?
How are these videos coming? Do we have to come down to the council here to see them?
No, you'll be able to...
Put online?
Yep.
Well, actually, we could go any of that week, Monday, the 22nd, 23rd, Wednesday, the 24th. Another city council meeting. So, cross that out. Monday, Tuesday, 22, 23, or 25? That make sense, anybody?
I'm in Washington DC that whole week, but if it's available by Zoom, I'd be able to attend. I was planning to attend the council meeting. Is it, is that for the hiring process meeting? Is that...
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to have you not be involved in that, so we'll...
Yeah, I'll be gone that whole, that whole week.
So, then we have to be looking at the week of the 29th?
Yes.
How's Monday, the 29th?
What about the 29th? Does that work? Monday?
So, that's a Monday. I wouldn't be able, I wouldn't be able to be here until, it'd have to be after 6:00.
How about Tuesday, the 30th?
Don't we have tax?
We have LBAE month. Oh, wait, that was a hold for an LBAE. Is that when it is?
Yeah.
The LBAE, is it the 20, isn't that...
That is the 18th.
Oh, so that's just a hold. Let me get rid of that on my calendar.
I can make the 30th work.
Yeah, let's do the 30th, Tuesday.
Sorry to push that off, but...
Yep, that's good.
What time do we want? 5:30 or 6:00?
What day is this?
5:30.
This is Tuesday, the 30th.
We had tax that day.
Well, I think we had it as a possible date, but they chose a different one. I had it on my calendar too.
Yeah, because our next meeting is May something.
And that's at what time?
Whatever time you want.
5:30.
Okay.
Nobody gets supper till we're done.
So, Jack, can you post that for us, please?
Yes, we'll, we'll post it and get it called.
Okay.
I think 5:30 in the morning is a good time.
5:30 AM, all right.
Fat chance you'll see me at that time.
What was that day again?
April 30th.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if you do that by a motion, that would be helpful.
So, I would move to set a special council meeting for 5:30 PM on April 30th to select the two finalists from the six semifinalists for the City Administrator. This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote. Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
That would do it for me.
All right. Now, Jill?
Thank you for all your hard work on that.
Oh, yeah. Thank you both for...
It is, I mean, it took a village, believe me. It was actually, it was a really good discussion, and I am so grateful. We have, we have a very good pool to select from, so...
Nice.
Yep.
We were nervous about that, right?
I know. We were nervous about that, but I think we...
Well, till Monday afternoon.
What's that?
Till Monday afternoon.
Yeah, I know, I know. I think it was the right decision for us to do this on our own and not... I don't think we would have got any better results with the search firm.
Good to hear. It always makes it fun to hire people when you have a good pool. And you're not, you're not forcing something, you know, like, they'll, they will work, but it's not what I was hoping for.
Well, and it's also nice that there's that many people that are interested in coming here. I mean, and really qualified candidates, so...
It's a great community. How could you not want to be here?
Darn right. Yep. I heard that Public Works is exceptional.
Listen to you. I like it. All right. So, so just a quick update. The fire hall roof is complete, and I am glad that was complete after all the snow that we just got.
Oh, yeah. Good timing there.
You'll see the check is in the bills tonight. I'm actually going to hold that check just to make sure that the final inspection was done and everything was good, because I didn't personally go on the roof. So, once Chris tells me that everything's good there, we're going to send it off.
They have to shovel it off first before they inspect it?
I'm hoping they did it before it snowed, so...
It came with a good warranty though, so...
It came with a good warranty. So, we've had a little bit of snow, so we've had three days of winter so far this year.
Well, at least it, it worked, it, it takes your salt pile down a little bit, right?
We, so, I, I will throw this at you quick. Our newest plow truck is a 2019, and the salt module that we have in there has capabilities of tracking the amount of salt that you use and things like that. So, I actually signed up for a... So I actually signed up for a, like a pre-subscription to track data.
Mm-hmm.
And I've kind of been watching that over the last couple of days, just to kind of see how it works. And I think I'm actually going to move forward with updating the older truck.
Mm-hmm.
I think the cost of that is something slightly less than $500, and then it's a $20 a month subscription for each vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
But you can download the map of the community in there. You can put that online so people can kind of see where the snowplows are at, so anybody could watch. I can sit at my desk and watch and see where Tim or Bill or Brady are at, and then what roads are done and what roads are still to be done, how much salt you've put down so far for the day or for that event, or potentially on each road. So I mean, you can get a lot of tracking and stuff on there. I think with the, with the way that we're moving, with the amount of salt reduction and stuff like that, I think it's a, it's a pretty cheap way for us to really track that and know exactly what we put down on each event, so I'll probably be moving forward with that here in the near future, but that's all I have.
So question on that, that tracking system, would that be something that we'd be able to, that the school board would be able to look at? Because I know they're always basing, you know, canceling school and things like that off what roads might and might not be plowed, or corridors and things like that. Is that...
So basically, anybody, if I understand this correctly, you can put a link out there or the map out there that people can log into, and it's basically just going to be a map of Columbus, and it's going to show all the roads in red, and then when they're done, they're green. So you can kind of track and see where they're at, and if you watch it long enough, you can kind of see the route that they're taking.
Nice.
So depending on what time you go out, you may not do the route the same direction every time because of traffic flows and stuff. So if it's, you know, if you go out early in the morning, Tim's going to want to go to the freeway right away because there's less traffic. Then if he gets over there somewhere between 6:00 and 7:30, there's too much traffic over there, and it's really hard to do what you got to do, so we try to work around that kind of stuff.
So we can check that before we clear our driveway, so you don't come through right as I figured, with the big huge plow of mountain of snow at the end?
Especially when it's wet and heavy.
Yeah, especially like that.
So...
You said it's the subscription thing, do you have to pay that in the off-season? Is it every month?
It's every month, so that's kind of the, that's kind of the downside, so for like right now, I'll do the legwork on it. I wouldn't start it until October for us, but yes, it is every month, so you're doing it in the off-season too.
That's kind of a luxurious expense.
Five hundred bucks.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's $20 a truck, so I mean, it's not, it's not crazy money, and I don't, so there's some things that I don't know about it. I mean, can I stop and start it? I don't, I don't know some of that stuff, so I'd have to do a little bit of legwork on it, but I'll...
Yeah, and this isn't just going to benefit you, it's going to benefit everybody in the community, right? Because they can log in and, right?
People could, people would be able to log in, absolutely.
It'd be like a quick, we could put a quick, have Connor put a quick link on the website or something of that nature. Yeah, I see benefit for, what is it, 240 bucks? Is that...
Well, it's just another added expense.
Yep.
Taxpayers are going to pay for it.
The thing for me, though, is at some point I have to, it helps me with figuring out how much salt I'm using, so I know how much to order for the next year. Because the crazy part about how they do the salt ordering is I already had to order for next year.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, we're not done with this year yet. So, I mean, most people, I actually had to order the salt before we got this last snow, so if you didn't, if you weren't really watching the weather or anything like that, we've used probably 40 tons in the last, you know, handful of days. You know, most people may or may not have seen that, and maybe they ordered not enough now because we actually have winter, you know what I mean? So there's some nuances out there that you can really track how much you're using.
But didn't we have a lot left from last summer? You ordered an extra batch last year because of all the snow.
Right, but we burnt, so we came into this year with about 50 tons left over from last year. So at, we probably only used, you know, if I had the tracking, I'd be able to tell you the number, so I'm just guessing, we probably used 75 tons prior to this snowstorm.
Yep.
And then this snowstorm, I think we used about 40. So with that being said, I still have an, I still have another 100 to order on 23, 24 salt orders, and I've just placed my order for 24, 25. So it's kind of a, the salt is kind of a weird thing because it's not, it's not yearly, it's season-wise, so the salt that I order in '24, I actually have to take the final number in '25, so it crosses two budgets for us. So it's, it can be a little, you have to get a little creative.
All right, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So for the communities that are starting to use brine, is that just a whole nother ballgame, like you have to have specialized equipment for that, or how does that, how do they, do they create the brine, or do you buy it that way?
Yes, no. You can do it both ways. We actually have the equipment. I am not a fan. The hard part about brine is it, it works as it says it's supposed to, right? You pre-wet the roads, you can see Forest Lake does it all the time, Wyoming does it, so when you're driving down the road and you see all those little white lines, that's the brine. Some people use different products called like Clear Lane or things like that, that's a calcium chloride or magnesium chloride, just different products, but we actually have a brine maker, and we did it for a few years, but I found that it's very weather-dependent and it's traffic-dependent. So if you brine, what it does is that the thought process is it's supposed to stop the snow from adhering to the road, and it does that if nobody drives on it. But the second people start driving on it, it creates ice on the bottom, and then that sticks to the road, and then you have to work that much harder to get it off. That was our experience. Some people, if you use it on a day like today, or yesterday, we'll say, when it's, you know, 40 degrees outside, or you know that it's going to be warm, it, it works better that way, and potentially, if you get a small enough amount of snow, it might even just melt it off. But it's, it's, it's challenging to do, and we did it for a couple of years, and we found that it was more work for us because it created compaction on a lot of roads just because of the amount of traffic that we have driving at all different times.
Is it better to do, to do it on a road that doesn't have high volume, or better to do it on a high volume that can kind of melt it?
It's better to do it, in my opinion, on a less volume road. So if you did it on like Howard Lake or Notre Dame, it packs right down. So there's just, there's enough traffic steady all the time that, you know, it doesn't give us time to go out. So if you were like Anoka County and you have trucks running through the whole storm, then potentially it's more beneficial that way because it doesn't cause it to stick down as much.
And doesn't, I mean, doesn't it result in using less salt? Isn't it supposed to be better that reason?
That's the intention.
So it's cheap, presumably less expensive because you don't use as much salt and better for the environment, is what I've read.
That's the intent.
Okay.
So the trucks that we have today, they have brine tanks on the side. That allows us to make brine and put in the trucks. And then what you can do is you can pre-wet your salt, so it activates the salt faster, so then it's wet when it hits the road and it starts to melt, so it doesn't hit the road dry, and then it has to absorb the moisture out of the snow and then start to melt, so it actually works faster that way.
Mm-hmm.
And it also, when it goes down on the road after you've sprayed it with the water or the brine, it sticks to the road better because it's not dry, so when you drop something that's wet like that, it just wants to stay in a, in a tighter pattern instead of spatter across the road.
I just have noticed, you know, where I live, that, you know, after a snowstorm or before, you'll see like these big patches of salt. I mean, they're like a big pile of them, and it, sometimes they don't ever melt. I mean, they just get kicked off into the grass, and I thought, well, that's a big waste, it's not doing any good, it's not good for the environment. That's why I'm asking the question, but...
So what happens in those cases? You try, so you try to keep your spinner running slow because you want the salt to drop in the middle of the road. The faster you spin it, the more it spreads out and kind of the less effective it is, so you want a, more of a concentration, and then you want your cars to run that over and move the salt around. And what will happen is the salt is wet and it's heavy, so it sits on the spinner, and the spinner doesn't move very freely sometimes, so it'll start jerking around. And they're also, the spinners work off of speed.
Mm-hmm.
So if a car's coming, you slow down, the spinner then slows down, and as you speed up, then it ratchets back up, and the salt will, you know, when it ratchets up, then it'll, it'll spin off a chunk.
Mm-hmm.
So that, they work best if you're driving up a road like Notre Dame, you got a steady speed going all the time, then everything just seems to spin nicer. But those slower roads where you're driving slow, the spinner and the auger actually slows down because you're driving slower, so...
Okay. Sorry, it took a lot of time. Thank you for explaining.
I love talking about that stuff.
You got all that?
Yep.
So if you feel unsafe, stay home until the sun comes out.
I will say, Forest Lake's been brining the road all the way to Iverson on Howard Lake.
That's been real nice.
Yeah, you're getting the benefit for free.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Jack?
Administrators report.
I attended a meeting on March 19th with the Anoka County Highway Department and the City of Lino Lakes. The potential road project to connect County Road 14 to Hornsby Street in Columbus is resurfaced again. There's approximately a quarter of a million dollars in ARPA money that's available for planning purposes. The Anoka County Highway Department is going to work up a program and request this money from the county to start some preliminary plans and work on this section of highway, so this may be something we can talk about as a bonding bill coming up for the next time. We did put it off this time because there wasn't any interest in Lino Lakes part, but now it's perked up again, so hopefully we'll be ready the next time it's time to submit.
Anything else?
That's all I've got.
All right. Anybody else have anything else you'd like to say?
Nope.
If not, the Planning Commission meeting is April 3rd at 6:00. The City Council Meeting Workshop is April 9th at 5:30. EDA meeting is April 10th at 5:00 PM, and the City Council Meeting is April 10th at 6:00 PM. We might as well move in. Anyway, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I'll call the vote.
Ron, aye.[1775.32]